Okay. It's a timely question. Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you all for attending tonight. This is a beautiful day. Um, and let's uh get started. The twenty first meeting of the one hundred and forty third Council of the Corporation of the City of Saint Thomas tonight. And are there any disclosures of interest from any of the members? Seeing none, we'll go on to minutes.
I worship I have a motion that the minutes of the meeting held on May the eighth twenty twenty three be confirmed. Moved by Council Baldwin Sands, seconded by Council Herbert.
Questions or comments on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
Council will now resolve itself into committee of the whole to deal with the following business. First committee this evening is strategic direction and development. Uh, first item is a request for a letter of tolerance for the property at six Prince Albert Street. And an encroachment of a garage on uh the property alongside of it belonging to the city. I have a motion that report ES thirty one twenty three relating to the request for a letter of tolerance to allow a garage to remain on city property be received for information. And further, the council approved the issuance of a letter of tolerance subject to conditions described in report ES thirty one twenty three for six Prince Albert Street to allow the current encroachment of a garage on city property. A move by Council Gibson, seconded by Council McCully.
Questions or comments on the report? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. When I I read that, I really didn't have a problem with it, but when it came down to the conclusion, this says encroachment is of minor importance to the city. I'm not sure. Definition of minor importance, does that? Does that mean they don't care? Or it? We can approve it one way or the other. I just wasn't sure what minor importance to the city was.
Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, thanks. Um, it it's uh, I don't know, it's a similarly uh. Um, it's not major. Um. We can, we can live with it. It's uh, there's a sewer that goes under it um that, you know, that might come up for maintenance or reconstruction every fifty seventy five years, so not a big deal. So our recommendation is that it's totally uh acceptable to give this letter of tolerance in this case. I think so.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Counsel Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. I I totally agree with what we're doing here, and I think when we can make sense of items like this, it's important. I I just wonder because I was just recently involved in another where, you know, a fence was encroaching and that had to come down and that was, that was fine, but during that time, other items were noted on the property that were also on city property and they were asked to remove those two. Could they have applied for this um? For those at that time? I just, I just want to make sure that because I totally agree with this, and I think whenever we can make sense of these things, we should be doing that and then, but let them know that if if we do need it, that it needs to come down, but if we could have worked with that property owner at the time, if if that would have been possible.
Mr. Lawrence?
Uh, my recommendation is you would use this tool sparingly. Um, just in cases where it's a, it's a significant impact to the property. If someone uh purposefully or or even by accident puts a new fence on the city property, it should probably go back because we need to build infrastructure in that place. In this case, because it's so old and it's been part of the the property for so long, uh, we can probably live with it. We look back at the history. There were three of these in the last about ten years or so, so not, not very often.
Good.
Yeah, just for clarification, the fences moved, but when that was working, a shed and another outbuilding that they had was noted that had been there for quite a while pre them even purchasing the property. So I was just wondering about those other things, but anyways, I I totally agree with this, and I think maybe just something to keep in mind for future.
Okay, further questions, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried.
Next item is notice of a public meeting to take place on May the twenty fifth at ten AM from the Committee of Adjustment. And this is regarding an application for a minor variance to allow new commercial building with a setback of twenty point one six meters and a new pylon sign with a set setback of sixteen point nine seven meters from the center line of Highbury Avenue, whereas the minimum setback for both is twenty five and to permit a southerly side yard setback of one point two five uh two four meters, whereas the minimum is three meters, and this is at three forty Highbury Avenue. I worship no further items on the agenda unless there are any items from the members.
Seeing none.
We'll move to community engagement and services. First item relates to employment services transformation. I have a motion that report SESS oh four twenty three relating to employment services transformation be received for information. Moved by Council Wookiee, seconded by Council McCully.
Questions or comments on the report? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. It it's it's a good report, Heather, for sure. Oh, you're on your way up, right? And uh, I I did have some concerns, but the the major one is you're losing five hundred and seventy nine thousand at the end of the year. And like, what, how's that going to affect you for sure of your department?
Ms. Sheridan?
Good afternoon, and thank you for the question through you, Mayor Preston, uh, to Council Herbert. So it is definitely going to affect um how we're going to be able to um assist the clients that come into Ontario Works, but like I mentioned in the report, we are doing a full review of the budget and there is hope, there is going to be an opportunity to apply for some interim funding to assist with that transition. Uh, but it's, it's a, it's a big, it's a blow to our budget, no question.
Or go ahead, Counsel.
Just a follow-up question. Um, I see now that your employment agency is under the control of London now. Like, what's your feeling on that? Is that going to have a real effect on what we do here in Saint Thomas?
Ms. Sheridan?
Sure, thank you. So um London will be the service system manager. So in all, for all intensive purposes, we will still work closely with all our employment partners in Saint Thomas. So right now, we have two employment partners, Employment Services Algen and Fancha, and we will continue to work really closely with them. I don't see um it being a detrimental effect to us at all. It's really just um in name, they're going to manage uh the employment part of assistance. So I think, I think it's going to be great, actually.
It's new for you. Have to find out, I guess. Anyway, thank you.
Yep.
Counselor Clark, then Counselor Peters?
Thanks. Uh, through you, Heather, will it mean any job losses?
That's something that we are looking at within our budget, but I can't say right now we're still in the preliminary um phase of looking at that, but six hundred thousand is definitely uh a large chunk of our administration budget.
Okay, Counsel Peters?
Thanks, worship. Um, this report's, or your, my comments sort of tie into the next report. Because it 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 strikes me when I, when I read that sixty seven percent of the cases uh of OW are single without children. And so the very people we want to try and move off of Ontario Works we're seeing, we're still seeing an increase over there and I I guess it's it's more of a comment, your worship, than and an observation that, you know, here we we desperately need these services and yet we're still seeing two thirds of our OW caseload being single individuals. And I recognize some of those single individuals may have some challenges, but the very people we want to focus in on, we're gonna have the challenge to deal with them. Thanks.
Ms. Sheridan on that, or?
I would agree. I it is actually, those stats are across Ontario, so that's interesting to note. And we are working, we're still going to be working really closely with employment uh services, like I mentioned, and we're going to be doing some intense work with those people who do have barriers and need to become employment ready, so that's part of the plan moving forward for sure.
I I I know that we're talking, if if it's okay from the chair, I know that we're talking about um the transfer of the supervision of employment services to to an office in London. Um, the 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 actual Ontario employment piece is still in place here. Uh, it just, as as Counselor Peters just said, there seems to be a huge requirement to for it. Employers seem to be using it less and using other agencies instead, but we have a large workload, work workforce of people at OW um that could could use this. We won't get any less service from them. And in fact, I'm hoping you'll get more service from them to replace the the funding that we're losing to do that job. But can you, I know you and I had a bit of a conversation about that. Will you agree that I just said it right?
Yeah, so Employment Ontario is going to be, their plan is to have a more robust um employment sort of a strategy that will uh reduce some of the barriers that are in present right now. Uh, but like the people that we re, that we are on assistance right now are like um Counsel Peters mentioned, do have a number of complexities. And uh, we are trying really hard to uh support them to independence and employment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Further questions or comments on the report? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carry. Next report.
Next item relates to review of the Ontario Works program uh for the year twenty twenty two. I have a motion that report SESS oh five twenty three relating to the twenty twenty two review of the Ontario Works program be received for information. Moved by Council Gibson. A seconded by Council Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Counsel Peters?
Thanks, worship. Well, I I want to dovetail this back to the previous report as well, too, because when when you look at a sixty seven percent of our caseload is is single without children. And then you you, when you dig deeper into that and look at the age group with third twenty five to thirty four um making up the largest cohort. You know, uh, how do we then zoom down even deeper to to focus on, this is the very age group that A, if they, we can't find them employment, how do we get them into a a retraining program? I just saw a recently announced a program for bricklayers. They're going to pay a hundred percent of the cost. I just saw a new one today for female welders that a hundred percent of the cost. So how do we get get these individuals, those that can? Get them to perhaps start looking a little differently, and no offense to his worship of going to work in a restaurant, but but how do we get them skills ready to go meet the training, trade shortages that are out there? Forget, like, I'm dealing with a an organization right now where we're trying to find a plasterer. We found a plaster. He is seventy five years old. He is charging us seventy dollars an hour. And I said, where's your apprentice? And he laughed. So so how do we zoom with limited dollars that we have? How do we start to really target some of these groups that, to get these individuals into a gainfully employed situation?
There you got it. Um, there are about thirteen percent of our caseload right now that are working on Ontario Works, so sometimes that's a misconception that people aren't working. Um, so about thirteen percent of people are. Um, the other thing with Ontario Works as well is we're often a gateway to other programs. So approximately ten percent of our caseload every year goes off to the Ontario Disability Support Program. Um, and that can take some time. And the reason why is a lot of people don't have a family doctor and the medical forms have to be filled out. Um, so we do have people that are on for various different reasons. We have people with domestic violence. Um, there's a number of reasons why people are Ontario Works. So really what we want to do is really work closely with those people to make them ready so that they are ready for employment. Um, so we certainly make referrals to our employment agencies now and our partners. So that's definitely, um, the other problem we do have sometimes as well with the trades is transportation. Um, I know we've tried that with different um builders before that were looking for people, but they needed somebody that had a vehicle to go to their sites to, which is a challenge because, as you know, seven hundred and thirty three dollars a month doesn't pay your rent, let alone be able to afford a car, if you are lucky enough to still have a vehicle, put gas or insurance. So um, there are barriers like that, but we certainly work everything we can do to try to encourage people because we know employment is the best way to remove, to leave social assistance, and that's what we want to see for people. That helps.
Counsel Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Thank you for the report. Uh, it's very stressful for me to see that at four or five years, they're living on seven hundred and thirty three dollars, which is, which is obviously a struggle, but I wonder how does your staff do with the extra pressure with these people on a daily basis? It must be pretty stressful for 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 them. So I just curious how they deal with it from day to day.
Yeah, thank you for recognizing that. It is really difficult and it's hard to help people move forward when there's lack of resources and that's financial, but also some of the programs um, you know, are really backlogged. You can't find a family doctor to determine, you know, what the next steps are to move forward. Um, so I think, you know, we try just really hard. We care about the people that we serve and we look for the best way that we can keep people moving forward. Um, and we do have successes too, so we celebrate those successes as well. Um, and it's really encouraging to staff often get thank you notes when people have moved forward, um, how well they're doing. And that's really encouraging too, so hang on to the successes too.
Thank you. Thank you. Further questions, comments? I have one. I mean, as a, as a business person in this community and speaking to other businesses in this community that cannot find staff at all, we had the lowest employment rate we've ever had in our region. And yet we are, we're projecting a growth in Ontario Works. I'm sorry, something does not match between the two, and I recognize the barriers and certainly we've had the discussions and and my time spent with with employment services tells me what some of those are and I get them, right? But if if there's ever a time we should be seeing a shrinking of OW cases in our community, tonight, today is a perfect storm. There is not a business person in this community would not do hiring right now if someone came in. So I get it. We have to prepare the people to come in to 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 be good employees, but as we said not that long ago at the opening s- speech of this council, we we will need, if we want to grow in this community, a vibrant employment situation also. So I recognize we have to have the best safety net we can possibly have. And we have to maintain that we're a compassionate city that is doing that. But this is a a a stretch piece for us at a time of the lowest unemployment ever. And for this region, we need to make sure we can show great companies that are picking Saint Thomas like Volkswagen that will be able to find the staff for them, right? And this is another, as Counselor Peters has said, there's, there's, there's an age mix here, a, 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 a mix that will looks right for employment. We need to compare and find out, and I, and I agree, we had a the more than one conversation on this. This is not ever going to be one hundred percent. We can't take all twelve hundred people and and tomorrow fix it, but I think there's a pretty good chunk that we can find a short way to get good employers to hire these people. One of the other things we hear a lot of is, well, I can't almost afford to go off OW because I can't carry my benefits with me to the next employer. And we need to be talking about if if you know, whether we need to lobby the provincial government for a better system of helping people through the transition from OW to work, then give us our marching papers. We've been pretty successful at talking to the other levels of government lately, so let us do some more of it. Uh, because I think we can win this one. I really think the 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 back to work plan is a good plan for us to have. Your thoughts?
So there are earnings exemptions that are put in place, so someone can work and still receive Ontario Works. And they can also res, can keep a portion of the money they're receiving when they're working. Um, and as I mentioned before, childcare costs can come off the top, so encourages people to work. So there is a mechanism in place um that people can retain some of the money that they earn. There's also health benefits as well because that used to be a big concern for people. If you have diabetes or you have, you know, whatever medication that you need that's really expensive, to lose that drug benefit is just really scary for people. So there's a plan in place that if people are working, um, we can continue health benefits for a period of time. Hopefully their new employer will have benefits, but we can help for a period. Um, and then pass that if someone has high drug costs, what we can do is calculate the difference between what they're earning and what they would um you know, if they took away their drug costs, are they getting less money than they would if they stayed on Ontario Works? And if that's the case, we can continue their health benefits indefinitely. Um, so we do some people that are on just because of health benefits only.
Great. Sounds like more barriers we can knock down. We 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 should be able to put people into the employment situation. Counsel Gibson?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, just one question. If you're uh on Ontario Works and you re, get a job, let's say at Foreman or Prestran through a contract to uh do client, are clients able to get steel toe boots at a cost from you or a voucher to buy any?
Yes, we do. We do help with the employment expenses. Um, that's some of the money that's will be going with the service system manager. But yeah, at this point, we have money to do that with. So yeah, we would help people with anything they need to start up their employment because we don't want that to be a barrier to starting a job because you don't have work boots or you don't have you know, uh, insulated coveralls or what have you, right? We make sure that those items are covered.
Go ahead, Counsel Gibson.
And just a follow-up question. Um, and how about bus passes? Is that available to them as well?
If people are actively participating in Ontario Works, yes, we pay for the bus pass for them.
Thank you.
Counsel Peters?
Thanks. Um, just curious about the the thresholds on earnings. And to, you make those so much more and you, because I can see where the benefits are a huge safety net for some. Um, is it, is, is, are the thresholds high enough before the clawback kicks in, or is is that an area that we could also be doing some advocacy work for to try and get that threshold higher to um you know, assist in that transition?
Uh, I know they did increase the rates considerably for ODSP. Um, they haven't done that for Ontario Works, so I think that's, that's definitely a challenge um for people. I I would agree that that's a problem. It's just, it goes back to the rate of being seven hundred and thirty three dollars a month. Um, that's, as we know, that doesn't pay for rent here. Um, let alone your groceries or any other items that you might need.
Not to uh make a make-work project, but I wouldn't mind just seeing something report back on that threshold issue, because if that's something that we can do some advocacy work for, if they did it for ODSP, why didn't they do it for OW? So perhaps between yourselves and Heather, you can bring something back to us. Thanks.
Thank you. And we we did have a bit of a discussion about that today about looking forward to AMO. Uh, where we get to have this type of conversation with many ministers. This may be certainly something we can take on um and say, if it looked like this, we would, we could predict difference. So please, help, happy to help you.
Thank you.
Okay. Further questions or comments? Seeing that, on the report, all in favor? Any opposed? Carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a request for low road closure in the courthouse neighborhood. I have a motion that report ES thirty twenty three, we're we're sorry, relating to the request for road closure in the courthouse neighborhood uh for a street party be received for information. And further, the council authorized the closure of Prince Albert Street between Metcalf Street and Isabel Street from four PM on Saturday, June the seventeenth to twelve AM on Sunday, June the eighteenth, twenty twenty three to allow for the courthouse neighborhood street party. Uh, moved by Counsel Kohler, seconded by Counsel Clark.
Questions or comments? I I perhaps missed the um invitations attached, but uh, well, we'll follow up with that. Further questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Thank you. It's carried.
Your worship, no further items unless there are any from the members.
Counsel Wookiee? Thank you very much. I, uh, two items I I'll speak to on under this uh committee. Um, I was in contact with Mr. Lawrence this weekend. I'm I'm hoping we can just uh talk about this, this issue uh in front of the mic. A a person contacted me who lives in an apartment, a privately owned apartment, and their neighbor's smoking and they have respiratory issues and it's troubling them and and it's a challenge. And they contacted me to ask me, other, does the city have any power or control over over this kind of situation? I said, I was quite sure that we don't, but I will bring it up in council. So it gets some um some airing. So I'm hoping Mr. Lawrence could just give us a little rundown, if if possible of what's possible, not possible from a city perspective involving our involvement in smoking bylaws in private residences. Or Mr. Pompili, whoever's.
Okay, we're we're going to take Mr. Lawrence. Go.
We put our heads together.
Yeah, I I saw the the smoke rising back there.
Yeah, there was nothing much when we had it together, but uh, uh, no, there there's nothing that we can think of where um you can, you can prohibit smoking and and um from one dwelling to another. There's no correlation. Um, it it's a, it's a private unit, they can do it. Um, unless, for example, like if if the whole building banned it, um, but we're not aware of any rules like that.
Thank you very much. And then I have one other issue uh separately. So this one is my annual fireworks uh uh public service announcement for people with animals who freak out. I understand that we have a two days before, two days after, and day of in terms of fireworks, if I've got that correct. If I don't, hopefully somebody can let me know. So that's five consecutive days of fireworks, and uh, and if you have an animal like we have, that's five nights of uh no sleep uh for the owners, as well as people who are bothered by this. So I'm not going to ask for a report. I'm not going to ask that we change things, but I'm hoping my fellow counselors, we can do our own little research this coming weekend and keep track of how many nights in a row there actually are fireworks regardless of what the uh bylaw says. And uh, keep track of that, and maybe we can talk about this because, you know, July first, we'll hear about it again. Um. I don't want to make more work for our bylaw enforcement officers. That's not the point. Um, but in my mind, in my perfect world, perhaps down the road, whoever's selling fireworks in Saint Thomas, when you get your fireworks handed across the counter, you get a little notice that says, here's what the rules are. Please follow them for the benefit of all your neighbors. So there's my uh, my hope from my colleagues this weekend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under this committee? Counsel Gibson?
Uh, yes, I just uh would like to mention about the uh Saint Thomas Legion here in Saint Thomas. Uh, we have the Chase the Ace and our progressive jackpot is now at nine hundred and sixty four dollars and fifty cents. So uh, ticket sales between now and then, our jackpot will be well over a thousand dollars. And I'd just like to encourage everybody to visit uh Family and Variety on Confederation Drive, the Railway Ultimate Mini Golf at four seventeen Wellington Street. And to uh visit the Legion Thursday, Friday, or Saturday between one and five and pick up your five dollar tickets, a chance to win a thousand dollars, a progressive jackpot. And of course, we have the weekly draw, which is also a percentage of the ticket sales. So depending on the numbers, tickets sold is your uh, your weekly uh wins, and then, of course, the progressive will also grow at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clark, did I see your hand?
Yes, through you, uh, just uh following up on fireworks, uh, it it would be interesting to just do a little straw um analysis over the next two dates and 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 then kind of when we start to review bylaws, uh, think about why we're at the number of uh two days before and two days after. To me, it seems like a lot of celebration for for um for fireworks and uh, and and maybe that could be something that we look at.
Okay, something for us to look at when we get to reviewing. Counsel get, Counsel.
Herbert.
Herbert?
Thank you.
I was getting there. It was the next word coming out.
Thank you. Anyway, what what is the process? If I go home tonight, go home tonight, and there's fireworks everywhere, do I just call the bylaw officer?
Yeah.
That that's the process?
Yep.
Because I I have one of those dogs that he now has to be medicated because he just goes crazy with the fireworks and and we have neighbors that blow them off different times. I know they're within, not within the five day limit, but so just call the bylaw officer through the city and and they'll investigate.
They they will, of course, if they can. They they're busy people and good people, too. Anything else under this committee? This one is, yes. None? Okay.
We'll now move into infra- infrastructure and civic operations. First item relates to a capital project at Valley View, rooftop ductwork installation. I have a motion that report VV oh two twenty three relating to the capital project of ductwork insulation be received for information. And further, that an additional fifty five thousand seven hundred and twenty dollars be allocated to the roof rooftop ductwork insulation project at Valley View. And further, that the tender submitted by Simco Refrigeration in the amount of three hundred and twenty five thousand excluding HST be accepted. Uh, moved by Counsel Peters, seconded by Counsel Baldwin Sands.
Questions or comments? Counsel Kohler?
Thanks, your worship. I I know in the report it says uh that the purchasing department took care of uh the tenders, so if I remember right, we have like a portal that these all get put out and then the companies go into um bid on these. Is that correct? Because I did have a couple um companies inquire about this on how it was tendered and and um apparently they must have missed it, but I'm just wondering because they hadn't missed it, like, is there opportunity to re-quote, or we just go with the report that's in front of us? But maybe if you can remind me on how these are tendered.
Mr. Treasure?
Thank you, worship. Uh, we use uh bids and tenders.
Thank you, worship. Uh, we use, uh, bids and tenders. It's an online, uh, tendering software. Um, no, there is no o- other opportunity. It, once that tender goes out, once it closes, that's it. That we, uh, can't do anything. So people, if they wanna be aware of tenders going out, they should, uh, contact bids and tenders and, um, you can get notifications for whatever area that you're interested in.
Okay, it's called bid, bids and tenders, but so we're stuck with this or we could like, there's no choice to vote this down and then re-tender later? We're stuck with just adding the extra cost?
Well, since it's over budget, um, we could re-tender, but, uh, we're not, it's not likely that we only did receive one, one bid on it, but it, I, yeah. Technically, I believe we could re-tender it.
Further questions? Counselor Gibson?
So the software that you don't, is it, is a software that you went on to to have the tendering done? Correct?
It's, uh, online website, bidsandtenders.com, I think, or bidsandtenders.ca. If you search bids and tenders, you can get that. Anybody can view the tenders too, so you don't have to sign up. If you put it, if you want to submit a tender or a bid, you would have to sign up to the, to the service.
And to follow up on that, uh, Dan, if, um, on our own website, our city website, could we not still have a tendering going out and suggest that they go to that website? That way our local businesses can have the opportunity to have the job?
Um, I believe our website points people where to go for, uh, for tendering to bids and tenders.
Further questions? Counselor Herbert?
Thank you, worship. Uh, how did we decide the budget of two seventy-five? Like where did that figure come from for, for, for the budget? And, and then all of a sudden, of course, there's only one tender, right? But, uh, I just curious, why, how we got two seventy-five?
Mr. Carroll, welcome. We don't get to see you that often, so I like to say hi every time you're here.
I appreciate it. Thank you very much. Uh, we, uh, basically, uh, I guess last, when we did the capital budget, we just went uh, and contacted several different businesses, uh, to get an estimate of how much they believed, uh, a project like this would cost. So basically we have a, a company that looks after our air handling units. And we use them as a resource to come up with that particular figure. But obviously they were, maybe they were correct at the time, but, uh, yeah.
Further questions or comments? Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you. Um, I guess my question is how urgent is this on a, on a one to ten scale? Um, if we could just, uh, put this back in the capital budget for next year, uh, or is this something that like, uh, you know, not being an industrial insulator, I think of industrial insulation not like breaking down overnight, but I'm not sure exactly what the circumstances are here. If you could just kinda let us know what you think. Thanks.
Mr. Carroll?
Thank you, your worship. Uh, it is, uh, important, I think, that we, we do this particular project. A number, a scale of one to ten, I would put it at probably an eight at this particular point in time. We delayed it. This is the second year of being delayed now. Last year it was delayed, uh, because again, we didn't, uh, anticipate that the project was gonna come in at the price it did. So we kind of fixed it up as best we could to get us through the winter with the goal of moving forward this year. So I would recommend that we move forward as soon as we can to council.
Counselor Baldwin Sands?
That was my question. What were the implications for delaying this and re-tendering the project might have on the system itself? Thank you.
Okay. On the report? All those in favor? Any opposed? It's Carrie.
Your worship, no further items for this committee.
Uh, thanks, worship. Under this committee, uh, an item that I should have raised under unfinished business. I'd appreciate, uh, a status report of an issue I raised a number of council meetings back regarding outdoor lighting on private homes and businesses and the impact that that lighting has on adjoining landowners. I, I think there's report outstanding. I can just get a status, uh, not necessarily tonight, but perhaps the next meeting. And then I have one item of new business. Um, it's come to my attention. I, and I went out and looked at the site today. So on Burwell Road, close to Ron McNeil Line, the developer goes in and builds a brick fence, a brick and wood fence. When the, was developed twenty odd years ago. And they put these little entrance ways in to sort of make it welcoming to come into the neighborhood. And at the corner of Riverbank and Burwell Road, one of these entrances is collapsing. And the homeowner is being told that it is his responsibility to fix it. And that's been confirmed from Nathan Borkman City Staff to me this afternoon. Um, and, and that the, the developer should have passed on to the purchaser that this was their responsibility. But I'm sure my friend Tom and, you know, Tom Clayton. Uh, I'm sure Tom is probably the third or fourth owner of this house and nobody informed him. And now he has this liability on his property that is going to be assumed as his cost. And I can remember this issue coming up. We were talking about Mill Creek and they wanted to put up these welcoming signs. And I think it even might have been Counselor Wookiee that said, you know, what sort of perpetual care fund is in place? To look after these things. Well, here's a prime example where the developer does it. And now all of a sudden it's the homeowner's responsibility. So I just raise it. Um, Nathan has come back to me on it, Justin, but I wouldn't mind hearing more back about how many of these other potential liabilities are out there for homeowners who had no clue because there's a decorative fence beside them. Not built by them, but it's now their responsibility.
Sure. You, you, you would like?
Just asking if staff can report back specifically on this one riverbank? And then I guess to go along with it, whose responsibility is it to go out and monitor these things to make sure they're in good shape or not? Is that the homeowner's responsibility? Um, and if you look at that fence along Burwell Road, it runs from the Burwell Park almost all the way up to the daycare. Plus there's fences on the other side. So if one is starting to crumble, my, my sense is telling me that there's probably some other failures, so.
She'd like us to report back?
I'd like to hear back. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else under infrastructure and civic operations? Seeing none?
Will now move into corporate governance and administration. Uh, first item relates to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four long-term care accountability agreement. I have motion that report V V O three twenty-three, uh, relating to the accountability agreement. Be received for information. And further that the city of St. Thomas enter into an accountability agreement with Ontario Health with respect to the provision of long-term care services at Valley View Home for the period of April first, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And further that a bylaw be prepared to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement with Ontario Health. Moved by Counselor Gibson, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments? Counselor Clark?
No, thank you. Uh, through you to the manager. I just wondered if it's through this, this document or, uh, or another, um, when we talk about or have some kind of discussion with the province on the number of beds that were allotted and, and whether this is part of the process or, or is it a different document?
Mr. Carroll?
Uh, for your worship to, uh, Counselor Clark. Uh, it is through this document per se in the sense that this document, yeah, is for the one hundred and thirty-six beds that we currently have here in the city now that is owned and operated by the city. But it would be Ontario Health, the organization that we're signing this document with. They would be the group that we would have the first level of discussions with regarding the number of beds in our particular area. I don't know if that answers your question or not.
I guess just as supplementary then, but are, where are we at in terms of kind of our demographics and the size of the city? And what is the forecast for, for growth for Valley View?
Carroll?
Uh, thank you. Certainly, uh, our number of beds in St. Thomas Elgin County has not grown significantly in the past thirty years. It, we have, uh, a few beds were added about ten years ago, but for the most part, we, we have the same number. Certainly, uh, obviously I would say to you that more beds are needed in St. Thomas Elgin County. Uh, but, uh, no definite number has been given. The province hasn't moved to that type of system in a while in the sense where they say thou shalt have X number of beds. They kind of have moved to a system whereby they issue an R F P. And then those that are interested in that R F P can make application to the Ministry of Long-Term Care for those particular beds. They do general calls in the sense that if, uh, organization or a, a sector or county or city or whatever is interested, there's a, a province-wide call went out, uh, so a year ago now, I guess, and municipalities could apply for extra beds at that time. It's still fairly open in the sense the province realizes that it needs more long-term care beds in the province. It needs, and it's gonna need a lot more as the population continues to age. So I think it's a, it's a moving number. And I guess each municipality, each organization, each, uh, provider of long-term care has to have that internal discussion and determine whether or not it wishes to move forward and request from the province more beds for its particular area.
Go ahead.
So I guess, uh, to the city manager then, as we develop our strategic priorities for the next five years, I'd like to make sure that that's on the list.
Okay. Counselor Herbert?
Your worship, through Mr. Carroll, how are you tonight? Nothing too difficult just yet for you? So if you were all of a sudden tomorrow, said you could have twenty-five more beds, would you not have to expand Valley View? Build? You just couldn't put in twenty-five beds already, could you?
No, uh, no, we could not put in twenty-five beds on the current footprint. Shouldn't say we are, we're at maximum capacity. So any additional beds would have to involve a construction project on the Valley View site.
A project.
A capital project or a whole other site, whatever the number of beds one is talking about.
And you have land there for that, do you?
We are fairly landlocked, uh, in the sense that we have the, the corridor behind us, the hydro corridor. And we can't build on that in any way, shape or form. So we can, we did a study, um, a couple of years ago, I think it was. And, uh, it was determined that additional beds could be added to the current site. But we would have to sacrifice some of our green space and we would have to go up and make it into a two, three or four story addition. But some beds can be added on the current site if we're willing to sacrifice some of our, some of our land.
So that in the future for you, for you? To do?
Uh, again, that's, that's certainly, uh, it's the prerogative of council, what, what they would want to do. That would be obviously your decision to make at, as, as you move forward and, uh,
Okay.
I'd be certainly willing to help build them.
Yeah, thank you.
Further questions or comments? Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you. While Mr. Carroll's here, like I don't wanna waste an opportunity to, to, uh, ask him a question in person. So, um, this is tangentially related to our presentation last week from the, the CEO of the hospital on partnering with a new development. And what is near and dear to my heart is dialysis in St. Thomas. And it matters a lot to me because my father was on dialysis for a long time. And he asked, it was okay for the first number of years he was on dialysis, but it got more crushing as time passed. And I think about your residents who have to go over to London for dialysis. And, uh, my first part of the question is roughly speaking, at any given time, obviously it changes quite a, quite a bit. Um, how many residents would you have that have to leave three times a week for dialysis? And how many are actually done with the peri or whatever, the other kind of dialysis on site? Um, and secondly, just an open question, do you know of any long-term care homes in Ontario that actually have dialysis? Like, like I'm trying to think about where we could have a dialysis clinic. And if it was in association with the development at Valley View, wouldn't that be awesome for everybody? You know, if the hospital can't host it or it can't be someplace else, I mean, it's in a mall in London. So I mean, I think and we could do it in lots of different places. So while you're here, Mr. Carroll, just a few general comments about that. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, we, uh, we do not do any dialysis on site at Valley View. Uh, at any particular time, it could be one resident up to four residents that go over, uh, to London three times a week. Uh, just like I said, just depends on how many residents, uh, needing that service at this particular point in time. Uh, certainly, uh, a long-term care home could offer that service. There are long-term care homes in Ontario that do offer that service. And, uh, you would just have to, again, work with Ontario Health, uh, to, uh, to negotiate that and to put in place the proper equipment, the proper funding and, and staffing to, uh, to deal with it. Okay, and certainly if any new development, which is talked about, certainly yes, that could be incorporated into. But it gets a, it's a, a long discussion with Ontario Health to get that far. Okay.
Further questions or comments? Counselor Kohler, yes, I'm sorry, I did write you down. I'll.
Thanks, your worship. I, I was gonna bring this up under new business, but this kind of segues right into it. I, and Michael, we've been having some discussion regarding the, uh, transportation of some people over to appointments like this, especially with, uh, needs of, uh, disability with scooters and, and, um, wheelchair. So I was just wondering, based on that, how are we handling that right now? Cause I know there's some concern right now that it's not available. Are we still working on somehow providing that? Maybe you can give an update on that.
Mr. Carroll?
Okay, thank you, your worship. Yes, we are still working on that. It's, uh, turned into a complex issue. Uh, but right now, services that are available to residents at Valley View and other long-term care homes are all provided by the private sector. So you will have to call up the private company, make the arrangements with them. They will come, pick you up or pick up the resident, go to the appointment and then come back. But we, we are trying to put together a proposal for that, but as I said, it's a, it's, it's a complex issue with staffing and with insurance issues and liabilities and who's responsible when the resident arrives at the, at the appointment and but we're hoping to come back with something in the next, probably six weeks. Okay.
Great. Further questions or comments? Seeing none? On this report, all in favor? Any opposed? Carrie? Next item?
Next item relates to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four multi-sector service accountability agreement. I have a motion that report V V O four twenty-three, uh, relating to the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four multi-sector service accountability agreement. Be received for information. And further that city of St. Thomas enter into an agreement with Ontario Health for the provision of adult day program services at Valley View Home for the period of April first, twenty twenty-three to March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And further that bylaw be prepared to authorize the mayor and clerk to sign the agreement with Ontario Health. Uh, moved by Counselor Kohler, seconded by Counselor Gibson.
Counselor Clark? Questions and comments?
Yes, through you to Mr. Carroll. Mike, I was just wondering if, if this agreement, uh, expands the program in any way? And if, if not, what is the, uh, the waitlist for, um, for the program?
Good. Thank you, your worship. Uh, no, this agreement, uh, doesn't expand the program at all. It still maintains our current, uh, funding levels. Uh, the waitlist is fluid in the sense that, uh, there's probably anywhere from fifty to a hundred people on the waitlist right now. But it's, it's been moving fairly fast because of the nature of the client coming into the program. Uh, we are seeing that, uh, the clients that we're accepting into the program do not remain in the program for very long. They, uh, they come into the program and they more quickly, shall we say, move into another care environment. For most part, long-term care or, or hospital type setting, if they need that type of care. But, uh, no, we're finding we're, we're moving quickly through the waitlist, but the waitlist is there. We're hoping and the kind of, for the past year, everyone has been waiting in this particular industry for announcements from, uh, Ontario Health on expansion of adult day programs. Because adult day programs are a great resource to the community. And they're one way that if a community doesn't have an adequate supply of long-term care beds, it's another gap that can be put in in the meantime until the community deals with its long-term care bed issue. And for some clients, it's a, a great program. It's great, uh, for them to have that socialization, that recreation, that exercise. And it's, it's a way to delay admissions as well into long-term care.
Okay, Counselor Clark?
Just, uh, uh, given that for every new bed that we, we, um, were to add to, to Valley View, there's a, a huge Were to add to to Valley View, there's a a huge cost locally to to the city. I'm just wondering uh. You know, if if the adult day program then is is a program that other municipalities subsidize. Um, and expand the program outside of what the province uh, gives them because it's. It's providing the service uh, without then in terms um, paying for extra beds. And it it's certainly a growing need in the in the community.
Mr. Carroll?
Okay, your worship. Uh, no, certainly that that's an opportunity for municipality to do. Right now, the program is a hundred percent funded by the Ministry of Ontario Health. Uh, so there's no cost to the city per se, but I'm sure Ontario Health would be open to a discussion. If the city wanted to have that discussion about expanding the adult day program using, you know, city resources and city funds. Uh, we expanded the adult day program at the Valley View site uh, back while looking at all. At uh, Lori uh, Counselor Sam Ballman Sands, probably ten, twelve years ago, I think. And that was a fifty-fifty cost-sharing agreement with uh, it was the Lynn then at the time, but uh. The city paid fifty percent and the Lynn paid fifty percent to expand our current uh, adult day program. So certainly, yes, they will be open to that.
Further questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie, next item?
And next item relates to the twenty twenty-three final property tax rates. I have a motion that report TR eleven twenty-three relating to twenty twenty-three final property tax rates be received for information. Moved by Counselor Wookiee, seconded by Counselor McCauley.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
No further items on the agenda unless there are any items from the members.
Seeing none.
Our council will now reconvene into regular session. I have a motion that the recommendations, directions and actions of council and committee of the whole. As recorded in the minutes of this date be confirmed, ratified and adopted. Uh, moved by Counselor Gibson, seconded by Counselor Clark.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried.
No reports of committees this evening. We'll now move into petitions and communications. Uh, first item is a letter received from VON in London. Requesting lighting of the jumbo monument from May twenty-first to May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. In recognition of VON Week. Uh, your worship, I prepared the resolution noting that May twenty-third, twenty twenty-three. Is already going to be lit in recognition of our CMP anniversary. And so the resolution reads as follows. That the jumbo monument be lit in blue from May twenty-first to twenty-second. And from May twenty-fourth to twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. And moved by Counselor Herbert, seconded by Counselor McCauley.
Questions or comments on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? That's carried.
Next item is notice received from uh, chairpersons uh, for the annual trade show of the Association of Ontario Road Supervisors. Of the trade show to be held from June seventh and eighth, twenty twenty-three in Strathroy. Uh, details of the event could be found on the association's website. Uh, last item is a letter received from Ethel Dilla-Penateer thanking council for the opportunity to provide. A deputation regarding fetal alcohol spectrum disorder awareness. Uh, your worship, unless there are any items from the members under petitions, we'll now move into unfinished business.
Seeing none?
Uh, new business of council, if there are any items from the members?
New business, Counselor Wookiee?
Thank you very much, your worship. Um, I was I was so pumped that um, to hear from. Uh, Scott Howard, Brittany Howard's dad, that she'll be in town. Uh, so Brittany is a member of the Toronto Six uh, women's hockey team that won the Isabel Cup. So they're the. Essentially the Stanley Cup champion of women's hockey, and she's gonna be in Saint Thomas on Monday, June fifth with the cup. Uh, sometime during the the day, ten to about one. And I just want to give a a shout out to her and the team. And uh, for her representing Saint Thomas so well, and my hope is that we can uh, that day we can snag her to hopefully come up to City Hall. And celebrate a little bit up here, but I'll be in contact uh, through through her dad, and I just want to let council know that that's what's going on and. Hopefully, we can see her and the cup on uh, June fifth, and I don't know, maybe the American uh, have a drink out of it. We don't know how that goes. I'm not sure kind of what will be violating, but um, we'll see what happens. Thank you.
To have Brittany come visit us that day, so let's see what we can do to work it out. Okay? Further new business? Seeing none?
Uh, your worship, at this time, we'll move into bylaws. I have a motion that lead be granted to bring in the bylaws. Moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Peters.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any opposed? Carrie?
I have a motion by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Peters, that the bylaws be now read a first time, referred to council and committee of the whole and read a second time.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Any of, carried?
Uh, first bylaw please.
On the fifteenth day of May, twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments? See none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Second bylaw is a bylaw to establish ta- tax ratios for the year twenty twenty-three.
Questions or comments? See none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Third bylaw is a bylaw to provide for the adoption of the estimates for municipal purposes for twenty twenty-three, the adoption of tax rates for municipal business improvement area. And education purposes for twenty twenty-three, and further to provide for penalty and interest on payments of taxes in default.
Questions or comments? See none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Fourth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement between the city and countryside cannabis corporation. Uh, this is to amend the lease at the Saint Thomas Municipal Airport.
Questions or comments? See none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Fifth bylaw is a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of the corporation to a certain agreement. Between the city and Ontario Health. This relates to the long-term care service accountability agreement.
Questions or comments? See none, all those in favor? Carried, next bylaw, please.
Sixth and final bylaws, a bylaw to authorize the mayor and clerk to execute and affix the seal of corporation to a certain agreement. Between the city and Ontario Health. This relates to the multi-sector service accountability, adult day program at Valley View Home.
Questions or comments? See none, all those in favor? Carried. Your worship, I rise and report the successful passing of the six bylaws.
Great work.
I have motion by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Peters, that the reported council and committee of the whole on the six bylaws be received and adopted. The same be read a third time engrossed, signed by the mayor and clerk, sealed and numbered.
Questions or comments? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That is carried.
Uh, your worship, only one notice remaining under public notice. Uh, notices hereby provided that. Administration intends to introduce a report at the June the fifth, twenty twenty-three council meeting. Requesting approval of an increased capital expenditure relating to the construction of an animal service center. Uh, no notices of motion, uh, your worship. There is no need to move into closed session for this evening's meeting. At this time, I have motion for adjournment, moved by Counselor Baldwin Sands, seconded by Counselor Herbert.
Questions or comments on adjournment? Seeing that, all those in favor? Are there any opposed? That's carried. We're, we have two minutes before we move into a public meeting. Okay. Ready to go? All right, perfect. I'll call this public meeting to order. This public meeting is required under the Planning Act. To afford any person an opportunity to make representation with respect to a proposed official plan and zoning bylaw amendment. For the lands known as eight said South Edgeware Road. The proposal is for development of a new hospice facility. Before we begin, members of the public are advised that if a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting. Or make written submissions to the corporation of the City of Saint Thomas. Before the bylaws are passed, a person or public body is not entitled to appeal the decision. Of the council of the corporation of the City of Saint Thomas, the Ontario Land Tribunal. Further, a per- a person or public body does not make oral submissions at the public meeting or make a written submission to the corporation. Of the City of Saint Thomas before the bylaws are passed. The person or public body may not be added as a party to the hearing. Of an appeal before the Ontario Land Tribunal unless in the opinion of the tribunal, there are reasonable grounds to do so. Those wanting to be notified of the council's decision should email customer service at customerservice@stathamis.ca. And provide their name and address. For those that do not have access to a computer and wish to be notified. They should call customer service at one at five one nine, six three one, one six eight zero, extension zero and provide their same information. Do any members of council have a disclosure of interest concerning any of the matters on this agenda? Seeing none, then I'll ask our clerk, what method of notice and when was the notice given to the public for this meeting?
Your worship, notice was provided in the Saint Thomas Times Journal on April the twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. And in accordance with council policies, notice was also mailed to property owners within a hundred and twenty meters of the subject property.
Great, and I'll like to introduce our manager of planning services, Mr. McCoom. And who will provide the background information on the proposal and present the draft bylaws. Jim?
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Uh, this presentation tonight is uh, as mayor indicated, for the proposed hospice site. It's a very good news story for the city. On the first slide, you can see in red the location of the proposed hospice site. It's at the westerly end of South Edgeware Road on the north side. Essentially between Monsignor Morrissey Catholic Elementary School and Waterworks Park. So we have two amendments before council. One is an official plan amendment and the other one is zoning bylaw amendment. We're gonna go through the official plan amendment first. Part one of the inter- is the introductory statement to the amendment stating that all of this part of the document entitled. Part B, the amendment constitutes amendment number one hundred and seven to the official plan of the City of Saint Thomas. Part two is the details of the amendment. Item one states that Schedule A land use plan to the official plan of the City of Saint Thomas is hereby amended. By re-designating the lands shown enclosed in heavy solid lines and numbered one hundred and seven on the attached Schedule I to the amendment from natural heritage to residential. So this is a copy of Schedule A, and on the inset, you can see um. The subject lands being shown in the heavy solid line and the designation being changed from natural heritage. To residential, and I should uh, mention for council and public's benefit. That there was a full uh, environmental impact study that was done uh, on these lands to to be able to support the change. As well as they have a arborist overseeing the removal of any trees. Item two of the amendment states that subsection five point one residential policies of the official plan is amended by adding the following new paragraph. It's uh, paragraph number five one three eleven twenty-eight. States that the following special policy shall apply to the development of lands as shown enclosed in heavy solid lines. And identified as one oh seven on Schedule I, that's the Schedule A land use plan, hereafter referred to as the subject lands. One, the subject lands may be used for a hospice facility and accessory uses. A hospice shall be defined as a healthcare facility providing palliative care. In a home-like environment while improving the quality of life for those who are living with or dying from a life-limiting illness. The use may include but not be limited to private patient suites, respite beds for short stays allowing individuals to return home. Family sleep space, palliative care clinic supporting individuals to stay in their homes, caregiver support and resources. Counseling services, grief and bereavement. Um, sorry, I can't. This is covering my screen here. I apologize. Uh, there's all be uh, massage uh, or pet therapy and community space in gardens. Part two requires an amendment to the conference's zoning bylaw to establish site-specific regulations to control the proposed uses as required. And part three states that the subject lands are subject to site plan control. And the site plan agreement will be entered into with the city in accordance with section forty-one seven C of the Planning Act. So our part three implementation and interpretation shall be in accordance with the respective policies of the City of Saint Thomas official plan. Going on with the draft zoning bylaw amendment. Part one states that zoning map one to bylaw fifty dash eighty-eight as amended is further amended. By zoning the lands shown in outlined in heavy solid lines on Schedule A here too as R five forty-eight. The schedule shall be added to and form part of the bylaw, should be known as special zoning map one dash one. So here we have special zoning map one dash one, showing the subject lands for hospice. And you'll see the label area for buildings and structures, and that will come into effect in just a minute with a new, another paragraph. So the area affected is the IR five forty-eight as was shown in the special map part, the only permitted uses, a hospice and accessory uses. And the permitted buildings and structures are buildings and structures for the uses permitted by nine five forty-eight B. Maximum gross floor area of eighteen hundred and fifteen square meters. Minimum lot front of fifteen meters, minimum number of parking spaces is set at forty-seven, the maximum height of one story. Location of buildings and structures for the permitted uses shall be located within the area that is designated area for buildings and structures as we saw on the special zoning map. One dash one. The bylaw also contains a definition for hospice, and the wording is the same as we had in the official plan amendment, so I won't bother repeating it all here. We have a couple of exceptions to the standard provisions of the R five zone that are otherwise co- uh, covered off by the special provisions of the amendment. And then three states in the anticipation of the eventual consolidation of the bylaw, we have a schedule B to this amendment, which is map one. Showing all changes made to date on such map part, including this particular amendment. So here is a consolidated map part, and you can see the hospice lands again at the bottom of the map. Being placed into the R five forty-eight zone. That is the uh, drafts of the amendments, your worship. There's any questions? I've just put up on the screen a copy of the. Uh, current site plan, and this plan just shows the location of the building on the site, the location of the parking area. And just also wanted to point out, we did have some correspondence come in. Uh, for a resident who is concerned about maintaining access to the trail that runs down to uh, the creek at the north end of the park. And there is a provision for a part that the city will maintain that'll run essentially along the east side and then across to the trail. So that will be a public access as well as some new parking that'll be located uh, near uh, South Edger Road. So people will be able to park their cars there, access the trail uh, through that walkway and get down to the park. Great, okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCo. I'd like to, I guess my next step is to introduce Laura Sherwood from the Hospice of Elgin. She has a presentation for us.
There you go. You can probably hear me better. I was saying so many important things. Um, but I'll bring you up to speed with our hospice project. Um. So thank you um, for being here to listen to a little bit of our update on our hospice project, and I'm super excited because. I get to share a little bit of some of the design work that we've been working um, behind the scenes for our hospice project. So hospice will be quite unique in our community. As we know, we have an incredible site at Waterworks Park. And hospice will be tucked in the woods and have a cottage-like feel. So we are so grateful for the City of Saint Thomas. For supporting the project through the donation of such an incredible parcel of land. So hospice will feel a bit different in our community because we will truly be tucking that building. Right in the woods, wrapping it around with that tree environment. But what will hospice um, start to look like? As you've seen in some of the earlier drawings. The design really has been anchored into some core areas. The L shape, which is, you can see on the right is kind of a, an L brown shading. That will be the private suites for all the families who are coming to hospice. And that will touch a hundred and twenty families each and every year will come and stay at hospice. But one of the spaces that is most unique is our pink section, which is in the bottom left. And that is the space where most individuals will receive care in our community. So just. So just over four hundred individuals will be able to come into hospice, access care, but go back home. Hospice in Elgin County will no longer be a place where you come just to die, but a place where you come for care. That means individuals who need care in our community will come in to access the palliative care clinic and go back home. And when that journey becomes a bit too tough, individuals can come into hospice for a short, short stay. That means caregivers in our community can get a break while their loved one receives that expert care again and go back home. So lo, no longer is hospice a place for just final moments. It will be a place filled with life and care along the journey, even for those individuals that never come to hospice. Families who lose a loved one, whether it's in our community or beyond, will still be able to access grief and bereavement programs through Hospice of Elgin. And you can see there's other spaces to be able to support that home-like. And we actually stretch that to a cottage-like type of design and feel when you come into hospice. Over two hundred volunteers will support the operation of this building and the care provision in addition to thirty-plus new jobs. And so what will Hospice of Elgin look like? Our community has told us they are looking to have strong connection to a natural environment. So you will see that cottage-like feel where you have images of that timber structure, stone, lots of glass and connection to that natural environment. We know it's an incredible site, and so not only will trails be wrapped around the building for the community to access, but the space inside will also be there for residents, family, and our community to use. You see that there's comfortable spaces for kids to jump on the couch, visit with their loved ones. You'll see that there's spaces for gathering, whether it's Easter dinners or Christmases. There is also spaces for families to be supported by refreshments so they don't need, need to leave hospice at those critical moments. And then, of course, there's the room and private suite, which we've actually made some enhancements. So each of the private suites from hospice will have their own private patio. That means the beds can wheel right out into the beautiful sight. They can enjoy breakfast, listen to the birds, or gaze at the stars. Life will continue right until the very end at our hospice. And so just to give you a little bit of insight into some of the further design, I'll just see if I can advance it to one more slide here. This is, again, some of that design inspiration. This doesn't feel clinical. It doesn't feel like our important hospitals. It really is a tremendous space that says welcome. Welcome to all in our community. It is grounded by timber and natural materials because we want you to have full confidence that your loved one will be well cared for. But also, again, that strong connection to that natural environment. So this is, is really the hard work of both our community feedback. We have a couple individuals with me this evening, Dr. Bob Jones and Pat Keenan. And there are hundreds of individuals in our community that have been working behind the scenes to advance this project, to build a special space for all families in our community. Hundreds will be impacted, and once doors are open, over five hundred individuals each and every year will be touched by hospice, plus the impact to all the families. So thank you for taking a little bit of a visit behind the scenes into our design of our new Hospice of Elgin.
Well, thank you for sharing that with us. That's really great news to see, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, madam clerk, have we received any written submissions on this proposed change?
Uh, yes, your worship. Uh, first, we've received, uh, notification from the Kettle Creek Conservation Authority that it has no objections and also advising that a permit will be required. And secondly, the correspondence from Lydia Vinay, uh, referred to by the planning manager, uh, looking for confirmation that, uh, public trail access will continue to be available to Waterworks Park.
Great. Uh, council, do you have any questions? Councillor Wookiee?
Thank you very much. And just my, my ongoing to dovetail to what Maria's just said is that, you know, my hope is that, uh, there's for people that are at the hospice, either like, or relatives and support people visiting for members of the public, and, uh, and Steve and I and Jeff Bray went for a walk some time ago, just to make sure that we get, you know, a pathway that goes down the back there that's enough so that, I'm just thinking, somebody who has some, um, who can be moved or move can get down actually into Waterworks Park, and that, that's for the public as well. So I'm always interested in trails, and this is no exception that we want to, you know, I'd like there to be a way for people to get in and out of, uh, Waterworks Park, past the hospice or through the hospice property, um. Because both hills, obviously, the one, the one hill is now closed right now, and the other hill is very steep to even walk up, let alone bike up. So just that, that's always at the top of my mind that around the back of the hospice that we have, um, a nice graded, um, descent to Waterworks Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Further questions from council? If we have no further questions from council, we'll open the questions to public for anyone who is attending tonight. Um, if you've not already submitted your concerns to the city, if you're listening on your computer, tablet, or smartphone, please click the raise hand icon if you wish to be heard. And if you have called into the meeting using a telephone, please hit star nine, and the questions will be taken in that order. When given the opportunity to speak, please provide your name and address for the clerk's record. If we have anybody online tonight who would like to, to, uh, share with us. Okay, if not, we have, oh, wait, I do see a hand come up. It's Shelley Morgan. When you are unmuted, and I think that will happen, please go ahead. Can you hear us? Ms. Morgan, if you're there. Oh, there you go. Excellent.
This is Shelley Morgan. Um, we are at two oh eight Ballaclava Street, right at the corner. Um, I'm certainly in favor of this wonderful use of this space, but I am, like my neighbor, do have some concerns about continued access to the park. So I'm really appreciative that that has been addressed. Um, what I would like to know also, though, is, uh, about the trees that have come down. Will there be planting going in to replace those? And will the, um, there was an area that was being a, a meadow, and it was sort of being re-adopted by nature. I can't remember the terminology they used for it. Will that be completely gone?
Mr. McCoom, your help on those, please?
Thank you, your worship. Um, as far as the planties are concerned, as part of the site plan approval process, there will be a landscaping plan, and there is an intention to plant for the trees, uh, for compensation for some of the trees that are being removed. And so as I indicated during the presentation, all the remove, all that work is being done under the guidance of an arborist, and, uh, and everything has been approved by, uh, the city parks department uh, under our tree bylaw. Um, so there, yes, as in, also indicated, there will be, uh, public access, uh, provided, uh, through to the trail. It goes down to the, uh, to the creek. And as far as the, um, the meadow area is concerned, as was shown on the site plan, the building itself and the parking area can occupy quite a bit of that meadow. The whole intention was try to, um, locate the building so it's sort of intruding into the woods to get that calm, serene setting that hospice is looking for. But they have to have a parking area as well. So, um, unfortunately, the little meadow area will be occupied by most of the development, but, uh, there will be some extensive landscaping and try to blend everything into that natural environment.
Thank you. Uh, I'll ask if there's any other, Ms. Morgan, you have your hand back up. Please, uh, ask your next question.
Thank you. Um, again, I really appreciate you taking the time to answer these questions. Um, when it comes to the trails that are on the property of the hospice itself, as it is described, um, will those trails be able to be used by the public, or will we have limited access to that, that area?
Mr. McCoom on the site plan around the use of the trails that are currently on the property?
Thank you, your worship. The, the current trail essentially sort of cuts across. They call it, I think they call like a it's, uh, but basically a path that cuts across the meadow area. Um, that will be part of the development, but, uh, as I indicated as part of the presentation, there will be a, a dedicated walking path that is going to be essentially on the east side of hospice, between the hospice and the school. That will go to the north and then cut across to the existing trail that goes down. And I believe, uh, we've been told that there is a bit of a tobogganing hill down there as well. So people will still be able to access the trail and get right down to the north side of Waterworks Park and access that area. So this will be under the ownership of the city. And so the city will continue to control and, and provide that access.
Okay, further questions from the public or from council? Any other questions from the public or from council? Well, in the opinion of the mayor, the public's been given a fair opportunity to express their views uh, regarding this proposal, and it, and it should be stated that everybody's been given a fair opportunity to express their views. And if no further questions, please be advised that any person wishing further ma, information on the actions of council regarding the passing of the bylaw for proposed amendments should email customer service at customerservice@stthomas.ca or, and provide their name and address. And for those who do not have access to a computer uh, and wish to be notified, we should, they should call customer service at five one nine six three one one six eight zero, extension zero, and provide your name and address and what meeting, the, the hospice public meeting you're looking for the answer from. This meeting is now concluded.